This meeting is being recorded.
Welcome, everyone. It's Thursday, January 27th. I am Chair of the Planning Commission Greg Cooksima, calling to order our meeting for this evening. First item is roll call. Commissioner Soltis.
Here.
Commissioner Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Greina.
Here.
Commissioner Krosick.
Here.
Mr. Bradbury.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Here.
And from the city staff, we have Carl DeCemus. Katrina Knutson, good to see you. Michelle Thomas, and welcome once again, Mandy Chapman. I got you this time. Okay, first item on the agenda or next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from our last meeting of January 6th. Are there any corrections or discussion about those minutes? Hearing none, I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I move that we approve the minutes as written.
I second.
Thank you, Commissioner Greina and Commissioner Bradbury. All those in favor say, or excuse me, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Motion passed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, well, I think we have a media agenda tonight, so we'll dive right into it. The first item is the interim zoning controls related to E S S H B 1220 concerning transitional housing, permanent supportive housing, emergency shelters, and emergency housing. So I will turn it over to city staff at this point. And if, as always, if you could please mute your microphone.
All right. Thank you, Chair. Good evening, planning commissioners. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. Tonight, as was mentioned, this is the first item on the agenda. At our last, your last meeting, we had a pretty substantial work session on the interim regulations pertaining to transitional housing and emergency shelters. There were a number of questions that planning commissioners had, and we are prepared to respond to those today. Before I get started, Chair, one of the items before we end this particular agenda item for the evening would be after we answer the questions, staff would like to recommend this go to a public hearing at the planning commission's next available meeting. And so if we can discuss that once the questions are answered, and then if there are any other questions, we can take those up and answer those as well. But we would like to get this on for a public hearing in front of the planning commission at the next meeting.
Okay, thanks.
Um, the, the questions that the commissioner had about the regulations during the last meeting really revolved around emergency shelters, differentiation between those for natural disasters and then for homelessness. There was questions about the size and how many we are going to have in the city. And then lastly, there was some question about, I think, section two of the bill, which talks about a broader housing plan that the city will need to work on as part of our 2024 update. And so, starting off with emergency shelters for natural disasters versus homelessness. As we know, within this proposed ordinance, we are recommending to allow one in the city that would house a total of 40 persons. The regulations that are within the ordinance as well as pertaining to the Bill 1220, they're very well defined within state law as being for homelessness purposes and not for natural disasters. If the commission would like to add some language to our regulations specifying that they are not for natural disaster purposes, the commission could recommend that. However, in consultation with our legal counsel, the, the purpose of those and the definitions of emergency shelters for homelessness versus natural disasters are two separate items. So at this time, staff does not necessarily believe that that needs to be included in here. However, we could specify that in all of our city staff reports and in our presentations to council that those are two separate items. Additionally, I would like to note that for any natural disaster or any other disaster, for that matter, even COVID, um, the the city was, or has established an emergency proclamation. And under the emergency proclamation, the city has a number of powers that it can institute. And some of those could be the institution of a natural disaster, emergency shelters that would be temporary. The placement of the emergency shelters as per this regulation would be for permanent emergency shelter. Whereas for natural disasters, I mean, hopefully we wouldn't be in a natural disaster forever. So those would be more temporary in nature and therefore, under an emergency situation would bypass essentially our zoning code. Were there any, or Chair, did you want me to run through this or take questions as I conclude each question?
I, I think probably it's best to, to take questions as you go.
Okay.
I don't see any hands up, so.
My, my hands up.
Commissioner Green is up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So when you said permanent emergency shelter, I mean, it seems to me that those things are sort of mutually exclusive, like permanent would mean permanent and emergency to me means that's a specific situation. So can you clarify that for me?
Certainly. I apologize if I was not clear. So for a natural disaster, we would think that those would be temporary and instituted under some sort of emergency proclamation. For what is in our code right now, if an applicant, housing authority, et cetera, were to come in for the emergency shelter, that would be something that would be permitted on a permanent basis. So they would be entitled to that land use if approved until it ceased to exist, if that makes sense. Whereas for the natural disaster, it would not need to go through zoning because it would be for an emergency basis and therefore would be temporary in nature when the natural disaster is over, that shelter would go away.
So I understand the natural disaster, why that's temporary, but, but you say permanent until, I mean, isn't homelessness almost permanent? I mean, I, I guess you said until it's over. I, so I guess I just want some clarification on that.
So what I'm, what I'm trying to indicate is that once the land use is approved, if an emergency shelter were approved and were granted land use entitlements, that would be permanent, a permanent location until such time that the property owner chose not to do that.
Okay.
Whereas the natural disaster, that would be there until such time that it's not, no longer needed for the natural disaster emergency purpose.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Krosick.
Katrina, you, you mentioned that the shelter would have a maximum capacity of, of a permitted shelter would have maximum capacity of 40 individuals. Do we have any data on the number of homeless people in Gig Harbor at any one time? Would that be sufficient, more than sufficient? Do, do we, do we know anything with that?
That is a really good question, and I was just asking our police chief that question as well. And Carl, if we can make a note to look at the census data. From what I, I heard from the chief, there are not more than 40 that we know of within the city limits. However, there are on the Key Peninsula and just across the bridge in Tacoma. There, there is a larger than 40, I guess, need. And so from, from our perspective and why staff at this point recommended one shelter of 40 people is because to our knowledge, that would meet or exceed the current need of how many we believe are in the city limits at this time.
Okay, so that should be sufficient. Now, if we were to have a what was it? I think 2004, whatever the date was when we had the major recession in the area, and that suddenly caused a expansion of homeless people in Gig Harbor. How difficult would it be for the city to authorize maybe a second shelter or an expansion of the capacity of the shelter?
A really good question. What that would take would be a, a code amendment essentially to the code section that interim regulations pertain to now.
Okay.
So, you know, four, four months to six month process, obviously with a, a willing political environment as well.
Okay, so would be a fairly extensive process then from what, what you're saying.
Yeah, our, our text amendments to the development regulations, they do have a requirement to go through the planning commission, as long as the council does not elect for direct consideration as well as a public hearing component. So it would be about four months to six months that that would take.
Okay, thanks, Katrina.
You're welcome. Okay, it looks like the chair may have stepped away for a moment, so I will move on.
I'm still here. Just had this round trying to plug in my computer that's about to run out of gas, so I didn't think you guys needed to watch that.
Oh, we appreciate that. If you don't mind, I will move on to the next question, which gets to the question that was just asked by Commissioner Krosick, which is Commissioner Brown asked a question about, you know, the, the interim regulations currently limit one to one shelter for 40 total persons. And so we may need to consider increasing that. That is something that the, the planning commission could recommend to council that we increase the number or increase the capacity. When we were looking at what we were going to recommend, we looked at a, we don't have one right now. The, the general amount of people that would need to be housed at this time. And then the third item that we considered was kind of size and scale for Gig Harbor. And a 40 person emergency shelter is a, a fairly substantial building. And for a community especially that does not have that service right now. And so for, as a starting point, that's what we put out for the planning commission's consideration. Of course, the planning commission, as I said, could recommend to council for an increase in the number of shelters or an increase to the maximum capacity of those shelters. But as just described under the previous question, at this point, we believe that a 40 person shelter would be adequate for the number of homeless that we have known in the city right now. There any questions?
Uh, yeah, actually, I mean, just anecdotally, I, I suppose there's maybe people living in their cars that, that aren't visible to me, but I kind of get around all over Gig Harbor and previously I had seen maybe a handful total. And, and for whatever reason, more recently, even those people have kind of dropped off of my personal radar. So when, when the police chief says less than 40, what, what is that actual number?
Well, we won't be able to provide you an actual number, although Carl, we, we will look into the census number and what that was as of 2020. I would note that we, our police force and our police chief are actively looking for, to provide services to folks that live or the, the homeless in our community to try to get them to services and bring them to places where they can be helped. And I do think that the chief and his crew have been successful in bringing assistance to folks and helping them not to be homeless, which I think is a great thing for our community as well. But to, to tell you the truth, we, we don't have an exact answer.
Okay.
So Commissioner Krosick has a question.
Yeah, just, well, actually, just to comment on what Greg said. Greg, within around the hospital in the woods, I have observed three different homeless camps. And so these would be quite hidden from view. You wouldn't be able to see them from the roadway or from, from where you would be walking. But there are those, and I have also at Shelmo Park observed people who were living out of their car.
Thanks for that info.
Okay, so the next question was in regard to the law that was passed. And there was a discussion within the bill of racial disparities within zoning and that the city would need to, along with all the other jurisdictions subject to this bill, would need to look at our zoning code and our housing types to ensure that we're not perpetuating racism within our zoning code. That is something that the city will need to address within the housing action plan that we're going to begin working on this year and in housing policy and development regulations as part of the 2024 update. The legislature in that bill did not make that section that that was in due at the same time that the transitional housing and emergency shelters were to be implemented. And so we have, we have time to work on that. And we will, we expect that the planning commission will be involved in the housing action plan as well as heavily involved in the comp plan update when we're working through that. So, long story short, it's something that is on the radar for us to work on, not something that we have to address under these interim regulations at this time. And I believe those were all of the unanswered questions from the last meeting. Unless I hear otherwise, and I'm also available for any additional questions, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Thanks for the good work on following up on those things. Does anyone else have any other questions this evening for the staff?
I've got one, Greg. I'm sorry I missed the meeting last week or last time, but maybe you addressed it. If you did, we can move on. But do you know what the plans are for the Key Peninsula in terms of any kind of emergency housing as well for that place? Because my thought is, if you build it, they will come. And if there are a significant number of folks in the Key Peninsula, then if they decide that's what they want to do and come to a place like that, 40 might not be much if you get, if you took that whole community into account. So is there anything going on on the other side of the bridge?
It is a very good question, Mr. Soltis. And the, there are a number of groups on the Key Peninsula that have recently reached out to the city by the mayor's office to talk about, you know, kind of the region's coordinated efforts pertaining especially to homeless and how we're going to address them. From those conversations, it appears that there are several churches on the Key Peninsula that are very interested in looking at either a transitional housing situation, potentially a safe parking pilot program. I believe that the city of Puyallup has in their codes to allow for churches to allow folks to park overnight at church facilities and provide restroom, washroom facilities for them. So there are groups on the Key Peninsula that are working toward this and are reaching out so that anything that the city does is coordinated with, with the Key Peninsula as well. And, you know, as, as we move forward with this topic, noting that the interim regulations are not the end to this discussion, right? We're going to be having a housing action plan and then working toward this issue in the comp plan, working to resolve this. We will bring more answers back related to that question, Commissioner Soltis, so that the planning commission is aware of kind of community connections and conversations that are happening surrounding.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I think that your suggestion then to, to take this to a public hearing that soonest opportunity is, sounds appropriate at this point.
Okay. I think that that would be great. And Michelle, we can work on when that would be noting the appropriate public comment periods and all of that. And we will collect written comment for the commission and provide that as summary before the, the hearing. When people will be able to give verbal testimony to you, so you'll have a, a written log of any written comments that we received as well in advance.
Okay, thank you. All right. So moving on to short-term rentals. Great, thank you, Chair. Good evening, everybody. So I sent out a, a memo, a staff memo on this subject, and I thought that the, the memo sort of was a, was a, was good enough to stand alone and didn't require necessarily a PowerPoint or anything to back it up at this point. And so I thought I would just speak to the memo and then kind of turn this into a discussion as we've done in the past on subjects like this, just to kind of, kind of feel out where the commission's at on the, on the topic. So the, the point of the presentation this evening then, or, you know, the discussion on short-term rentals tonight is really to sort of lay the, lay the groundwork for the process. The, kind of provide a little bit of background and have a quick discussion about, you know, a, a few of the findings or examples that staff has presented in the, in the memo, and then to talk about the, the questions that were presented here and whether or not that's a, you know, that's a, if that, that, that list of questions is really meant to be a starting place. And maybe there's more questions that we need to add to ask ourselves, you know, in addition to just the substantive questions about short-term rentals that commissioners might have. So the first section here is, is relative to the background, history of, you know, why we're, why we're here tonight. The council considered a draft ordinance to place a moratorium on level up, on lodging level one applications. And lodging level one applications or lodging level one uses where we have placed short-term rentals at this point, along with bed and breakfasts. The ordinance was passed, it was adopted as ordinance 1467. I've included that in your packets. And I know you've, you've certainly had a chance to look at that in the past. And so as, as part of that moratorium on accepting lodging level one applications, we are, you know, required to, or the council was required to hold a hearing. It did hold a hearing. Received several, they received several comments from the public, and I included all of those comments in your packets for this evening. So that you would kind of get a, a flavor for here early on, what the, you know, how the, how the community is thinking about short-term rentals and what sort of support there is out there and, and what kind of opposition there is. So following, following that, the council did adopt ordinance 1467, and they directed staff to work with the planning commission to come up with permanent regulations for short-term rentals. And we were directed, staff was directed to go and do a little bit of research and, and begin the discussion with, with you all. So here, and so here we are. I provided some background of the issue here around why we're, why we're having this discussion. And and really where short-term rentals, how they're dealt with today and where they're, where they're allowed, where they're permitted and where they're, where they're not permitted right now. I provided some definition here around what a short-term rental is based on R C W. And then led into, well, the, the reason that we're, that we're really discussing this is that the, you know, the city was hearing that there were a lot of these short-term rentals in the community. And the regulations that we're using now under lodging level one are not specific enough to short-term rentals. There, they was never, they were never really designed, the lodging level one definition was never really designed to cover a short-term rental. And so we, you know, we're applying a, we're applying a definition for a use that doesn't really line up. We also don't really know the extent of how many of these we have in the city at this point. You know, we know that we've got maybe between 10 and 15 of these out there that are either a bed and breakfast or they've been approved as a lodging level one. They have a, they, they have a business license. And in some cases, they have a conditional use permit, but in some cases, they may not. We believe there's probably others out there as well that are operating probably without conditional use permits. And maybe even without business licenses that we're just unaware of. So the, the the planning and building committee, when this was presented to them, was, was alarmed that we didn't have proper regulations in place to be able to permit these adequately. And so they brought that back to council and council declared the emergency so that we would not have any more of these applications come in. Under the staff findings section, we really took a, I, I don't, and I, and I want to preface this before I, before, before I talk about which cities we, we have in this, in the summary here, we weren't trying to make any kind of comparison to Gig Harbor by choosing any of these cities. Certainly, we're not comparing ourselves to, to Bellevue or to Tacoma. Or even Walla Walla for that matter. But these were cities that had, have developed ordinances around short-term rentals. And so it offers us, in my opinion, a really good example of some sort of differing ideas around how these can be regulated. And so that was the purpose of kind of providing this really broad overview of each of these jurisdictions, Bellevue, Spokane, Tacoma, Walla Walla, and Olympia. You know, that, I think, I think by, by looking at these, and I'm sure all of, all of you have had a chance to sort of survey through these bullets. But, you know, there are some, there are definitely some common themes that that, that come out of it. And I think that's maybe where we want to focus some discussion around, what are those common themes? Do those make sense for the city of Gig Harbor? You know, are there those things we should, we should sort of focus in on and see if they, if we can, if we could incorporate those into our ordinance as we start to draft this. And then finally, under questions and next steps, we really kind of took a shotgun approach at throwing a lot of questions out there that we were, we hoped that commissioners would find would sort of hope, hope they would energize your thoughts and opinions about this subject. And so that was really the, the, the reasoning behind pulling this list together. And I think that might be a good place to start in the discussion if that, if that's the direction the commission wants to go tonight. And then finally, I would, at the end of the meeting tonight, would like to discuss with the commission, you know, due to the nature of this issue and, and the, and the, the known interests that we have in it. You know, oftentimes when we're talking about regulations like this or we're creating regulations, we would, you know, we have these study sessions. Commissioners would ask staff to go and do some research. We would bring back answers. And then we would draft an ordinance and then it would be a public hearing. And at that point, the community would then have an opportunity to weigh in. In some cases, we do, depending on what the issue is, we would have, we would hold maybe an open house or an open forum of some sort where we would allow the community members, you know, community members to come in, have discussion with, with staff and we would, you know, we would take that feedback and analyze it and then bring that back to, back to the commission. We can't really do that today because of, because of COVID. So staff would, would recommend that at it, at, at the earliest opportunity, we open up kind of a, an early public comment period to garner as much community comment as we can. Sort of analyze that, break it down, bring that back to planning commission and have a couple of studies. Break it down, bring that back to planning commission and have a couple of study sessions around that. One or two, whatever it looks like, and then let that. Help us actually draft regulations. That then we could put back out to the community or comment to see if we've hit the mark or not. And then hold a public hearing on that draft break on the on that draft ordinance. So. That's a, that's kind of that, that's that's kind of the. The approach that we would recommend, of course, planning commission can choose to go in whichever direction you would like to go. But the the goal for tonight is to kind of get a a primer, is to be sort of a primer to set the table for. This discussion, find out what. Issues. The commissioners are most interested in and we can get out there and get some information on and then hopefully come up with a. With a with a process strategy. So we can move this move this issue forward and really come up with some 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 good good regulation around the subject that. Hopefully creates a win win for everybody. So I think with that chair, I'll stop. Babbling on here and turn it back over to you and the commissioners, so I'm sure there's a lot of questions. Oh, and I and I should also say that in your packets, Commissioner Brown had provided sort of a an analysis. In his view, and so we we decided to provide that to to the commission as well so that we can. So if there's any any discussion we need to have around that, happy to have that discussion as well this evening. So with that, Chair, I'll hand it back over.
Okay, thank you very much. And and I would just like to underscore a point that you made, we do have a number of people that are attending. It's it's great to see that they're here as, you know, audience. But this, this is not a public hearing, it's it's not meant to be interactive, we are obviously going to be seeking. Lots of input from the public on this subject. But so please, for those of you in the new audience, please don't put comments up, it's it's distracting. And Michelle, I appreciate you, you know, serving our serving our constituents. But all of those things can be sorted out after the meeting by contacting Michelle. Or finding the information that's on the city's website, so I just would like to be able to focus our attention here. Without any distractions and and from the folks again. Super glad that you're here, I know some of you at least are are have provided input to the council. Previously back in the fall, we have all had a chance to look at, look at your input and we're certainly going to have. You all are going to have an opportunity and this will may be made widely public because it's. You know, obviously. For lack of a better term, a a hot ticket item. That no doubt is going to foster passionate opinions on on the pros and cons of short term rentals. And Gig Harbor, so. Our charge from the city council is to recommend. A set of regulations, we're just at the very beginning of this. And so this is kind of a fact, in fact, finding and opening discussion. Anything that is discussed tonight among the commissioners is is in the interest of understanding the problem. So please don't think that anything that is said this evening is is a preconceived notion by any one of the commissioners. Because we're going to be doing a lot of study on this and as you can see, the staff has already provided us with a lot of information. So. If you're unfamiliar where to get that information, please feel free to contact Michelle Thomas tomorrow during normal working hours. And she can correct you there. Okay, having said that. I will open the floor for. Discussion around the commissioners. Commissioner Griner.
I and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but it seems to me as we're discussing this, it would be helpful to know. If any of the commissioners. Own any of these properties. Just so that we had sort of a sense of where their comments are coming from. I personally do not, but it seems to me that it would be helpful to know that information.
Yeah, I think that that's a great point, Commissioner Griner and. As we discuss this, certainly I think that in the interest of transparency, the public deserves the right to know. If any one of us is is currently operating any type of Airbnb, VRBO. Short term rental facility as as defined in the city's emergency ordinance, so. And I think it's just easy enough, I can go tell you right now, I do not. And I I think it would be. Fair to ask everybody just to go around the room and say whether or not you do, so Commissioner Griner has already indicated she has not. Commissioner Soltes.
I do not.
Commissioner Krosick.
I do not currently, I previously owned vacation rental property in Oregon, but nothing in Gig Harbor.
Okay, Commissioner Brown. I I believe that you mouth, I do not, but you were muted. Commissioner Bradbury.
I do not.
Commissioner Bennett, can you still hear us? Looks like we have lost Commissioner Bennett's phone, whoop, maybe not.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, cool, I had to press star six. I do not have one in Gig Harbor, we have a rental in central Washington right now.
Okay. All right, I think that's everybody, right? Thanks and and thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Griner, did you have any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Soltes, you have your hand up. Hey Bob, you just you just muted yourself.
Okay. I wanted to ask Carl what he believes our peer cities are in state of Washington. Cause you said these were, these are all big, big cities you have in your list here. In terms of when you think about cities of our of our like, of our ilk, which ones come to mind that we could kind of. Maybe maybe look a little closer at places look like Gig Harbor a little bit.
Yeah, that's a really good question, Commissioner Soltes, and that's a question that seems to come up. Often in in our line of work and it's a difficult one too. But I guess the ones that I always sort of, the ones I always point to when that question is asked of me is, you know, I think of Silicon. And I think of Paul's Bow are two that come to mind immediately, maybe. Maybe Mercer Island, you know, if you wanted to look at something up a little bit further north. You know, certainly if we're looking at, you know, it I guess it kind of comes down to, are we talking about character? Of the community, you know, are we talking about the size of the community, you know, there there's a, there's a couple of different ways to to approach that. In in this instance, I would say, you know, Silicon and Paul's Bow are probably two. Two pretty good, pretty two pretty good comparables, you know, especially when we're talking about a place that maybe, you know, attracts people. For all of the the amenities that we offer, you know, water parks, you know. Sort of a historic downtown shopping, that kind of thing, so yeah, those are the two that I would probably point to.
Okay, second question, if I may. You talk about gathering public input and I think you've kind of talked about the the traditional ways of doing that, but. I'm wondering if we're ready to move into twenty first century here and maybe put some Facebook pages out there or Twitter or. Something like that, because it seems like that's where the action is and maybe we could get a lot more people. Willing to hop on a page and send in their comments electronically. And maybe not go to the trouble of writing a letter or attending a a long boring meeting. Have you guys thought that kind of of that approach for any, not just this one even, but other other ways of getting public input?
Yeah, so you're 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 talking about utilizing social media in some in some form, you know, when when COVID. And so in answer your question, yes, we have, we have thought about that, we do have a, we do have a Facebook page. For the city and, you know, we do have. Some tools that we could use for to to get some elec- electronic feedback. From community members, but what your comment. Sort of leads me to think about is that when COVID started, everybody kind of had to rethink public meetings, just like we're doing tonight. And one of the things that has come out of that is the idea of sort of virtual open houses whereby. Websites are utilized or social media is utilized. Polls are utilized or online polls to get feedback from people, that kind of a thing, all, you know, and and sort of all centralized. In one webpage, you know, on one webpage where people can access all of those different tools. And then the 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 virtual open house is open for, you know, the a certain period of time where people can access that page and access those tools. And then we would, you know, we would sort of gather all that feedback and and I think that's certainly something that we could explore. If that's if that's something that the commission is interested in, rather than sort of a traditional. Open up, open a comment period and let people send in their emails, you you know, we, in this, in this case. You know, where where I've seen these virtual open houses used in other places, there's, they have more information to maybe disseminate. You know, maybe there's, maybe there's some sort of a plan, you know, maybe there's a. You know, landscaping or design of a building or something, or something that they have to share that people can look at actually and comment on. And in this case, it's, you know, with short term rentals, it's not exact, we don't, we don't exactly have something like that that we would really need to share. So I feel like we might. We might get to the same endpoint either way. But you know, I I don't know, maybe I'm not, maybe I'm not thinking outside the box quite enough.
It's just a thought.
Yeah, I think it's a great thought.
Commissioner Krosick.
Well, I think that. These people are going to do this regardless of whether we have an ordinance or not. So I think the best thing to do is that we move ahead and. Do establish an ordinance for the city of Gig Harbor and do regulate and control this. As in a reasonable manner. I think the other thing that I came away with from the citizen comments was the complexity of the current process that the city has. And one of my concerns is that if your process is too complex and somebody wants to do this, they're just going to go ahead and do it anyway. Without going through the process, so I think there has to be consideration given to make this process as user friendly. As possible so that people will be encouraged to comply and not discouraged from doing doing that. I also wanted to react to something that I believe was in Commissioner Brown's comment about something called Picasso. And this is where you sell one eighth interests in. High end properties to people so that they have a vacation home to go to. I went to their website and it's not strictly limited to resort communities. They also had properties available in cities like San Diego and other places. I think we as a city want to do anything possible to. Make sure that this kind of activity doesn't go on here in the city of Gig Harbor, because I can see all kinds of negative repercussions. From this sort of activity and it is, it appears to be enormously profitable for the companies that do this sort of thing. And lastly, I have two pages of comments of things that I pulled out of the various ordinances that I thought were very worthwhile. And and rather than spend a long time going over these, I think what I'll do is I'll just go ahead and send these to Michelle and Carl. And they could distribute it to the other planning commission members, so these would be things that I think should be part of our ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Bennett, I don't know if you can still hear us, but or whether or not you know how to raise your hand on the telephone, but do you have any questions or comments?
If you can hear me right now, right now, I'm just listening in, so nothing immediately to say.
Okay, thanks, we can hear you. Chair, if I could ask one, oh, sorry, if I could ask one clarifying question of Commissioner Cross's. Comments there, you talked about the the complexity of the permitting process as you read in the from that you heard, that you read. When you were reading some of the public comments from the from the council sessions, was that, were you referring to? The complexity of the current process or the potential or or what we've, what we see in other communities currently? And how complex their processes are?
I believe the comments were directed to our current process here in the city.
Okay, and so that's what I read too, I just wanted to make sure we're on the same page there, okay, thank you for the clarification.
And and I can add a a little bit to that, I sat in on a. Meeting. I don't think it was a hearing examiner, but it it. It involved a meeting of a family that was going through the process. The right way. To be able to use their house as a as an Airbnb. It was in right downtown Gig Harbor and I was struck by a couple of things. One was just how onerous the process is. And I think the point has been made that if if that's the case, people are going to do it, they're going to sidestep the process. And secondly, I was even more struck by the cost. And and if I remember correctly, it that it costs upwards of five thousand dollars. To to do this legitimately. And. If. You know, getting all the permits, all the licenses, all of those things. And if my memory is accurate and and that information is accurate. It is no wonder that people are doing this under the table. Because I I just, I I can't accept that that's a reasonable fee for anyone that to pay. When they. If if they want to run out a a a room out of their house. So. I I think there's. I'm actually a little bit loathe to even express any opinions at this point because because I want to. I think for me, the starting point needs to be as much public input as possible. Before. I I start to. Form an opinion. And and we have seen, I think there were what thirteen or so public comments. You know, that that were presented to the council and all of them had very legitimate points on on both sides of of the arguments. And and it's interesting to me to to see that in in my reading of it, reading, reading the tea leaves, not reading the written word. Is that even the public's reaction to the. Action taken by city council seemingly was misunderstood because nothing is different. Based on that emergency ordinance, other than that they are no longer processing the applications. And there were virtually, I I I know of one because of the 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 public comment that was made to the council, so. So there's one in the pipeline that was stopped. There were others, I think, in the pipeline that were complete, but there are, all you got to do is go to the websites to know. That that within the city limits, trusting. The work of Paul Kadzik, that there are twenty six. As of last fall, there were twenty six. there were twenty-six operating within the city limits of Gig Harbor. Um and I believe that there are only four that are fully licensed, if that. So so there's, so my point is the city has not gone out and put the kibosh that I'm aware of anyway, and correct me if I'm wrong, Carl, uh of any of those people, all of those people, as far as I know, are still operating their, their Airbnbs.
And that's correct, Chair. Yeah, that, and that is a grill, it's a really good point that that is, that there was not the, was not the intention of council's action to shut down people who were operating already um you know, legally established uh under the code as, as it has been interpreted to this point. The, the purpose was uh to put us, put a stop on, on processing new applications, as you stated, so that we could get our hands around this issue. Because we, you know, I, I think as several commissioners have said so far, you know, the there, there's a, there was a, a feeling that the writing is on the wall that we're gonna be seeing more and more and more of these, and our current regulations are not adequate to regulate, to uh, to, to, to permit them properly.
So I, I, I would think that, you, you know, I think it would be safe to do a straw poll, you know, here tonight and say, do we all feel that we have to have regulations in place? We don't know what those are going to be. But, but I, I for one feel strongly that the city has to establish some regulations um and some processes uh uh as we move forward with, with dealing with the short-term rental issue. Is there anyone that doesn't agree with that?
I agree with it, um Greg, but I think you got to be clear that you, you can't just establish a regulation and think everything's gonna be hunky-dory. You have to and you have to engage the other pieces of it. If folks don't follow the rules, there has to be repercussions. You can't just say it's really bad you guys do that and stop doing it, and then if they keep doing it and you do nothing, then it was a fruitless from, from the get-go. So we need to have the full suite of regulation and mechanisms to enforce the regulation so that uh what, what the city has determined is uh is what, the way that they, we operate. But I agree, we need regulations for sure.
Commissioner Griner?
Carl, is that, some cities that come to mind as being similar, and I agree with the ones you already said, but what about like Port Townsend or Vashon Island or Bainbridge Island? To me, they're similar in a lot of respects. Um is it possible to find out if they have? I mean, maybe the other connect commissioners agree or disagree that those would be cities that might be more similar than some of the other ones?
Well, uh if I may, I, I think that really speaks to a different problem. When I uh went looking for regulations that cities had put in place in the state of Washington, at the time I was looking for this information, uh there was, there were only seven cities on record in the entire state that had uh taken steps to pass ordinances regulating short-term rentals. And Carl, I, I don't recall whether Steel Coombe or Paulsbo had ordinances or not. Can you to tell us that?
I don't believe Paulsbo does. Uh I'd need to look closer, but Silicon did uh recently go through a fairly contentious process of um coming up with short-term rental regulations, and I didn't include them in this initial survey uh just because I didn't um, I didn't have enough information, and I didn't want to just put something out there if I didn't know enough about it. There, there was a lot of uh miscon, there was a lot of misconception uh during that process um on how they were uh going to regulate them. There was a, there was a, there was a sense that they were essentially banning them from the city, but that really wasn't the case. It was, they did, they did put together some regulations that um that worked to disallow certain types, but allow others. Something I think akin to what uh Walla Walla did. And I do have a um, a contact over there, planner uh that I'm planning to have a meeting with and get uh better information on exactly what they've got and the, and the process that they went through. But we've been kind of missing, we've been missing each other. I've had a couple of emails with them. Um but I wanna, um I definitely, I'm definitely targeting Silicon as one of the um one of the cities that I think we can learn some lessons from in our process here too. So I, I, so I think it's a very good point, but I, I also appreciate your point, Commissioner Brown, that there are not a lot of cities that have tackled this issue. Many cities have uh kind of left it under the guise of the uh bed and breakfast uh or, you know, or some other and, or, and or in some cases just that it, you know, a home occupation. And i- in, in a lot of ways, doing, you know, dealing with it the same way that Gig Harbor has been dealing with it in the past, which is kind of placing it under uh another use that may sort of, you know, provide some, some regulation around the permitting of them, but not, it's not e- exact, it's not exactly what the um, what that definition was set up to enforce, you know. As you guys know, the short-term rental is a, it is, it is a different idea. It is a different, it is a different animal and, and it, um from what I've seen, it uh, it does deserve its uh, does deserve some, some definition around it of its own.
Well, following up on that point, I think it's important that we look, we uh attempt to be precise in the way we consider the short-term rental issues. Cause there are three or four different types of short-term rentals that I think will need uh to, to be addressed, you know. One is the spare bedroom or a couple of bedrooms in a residential house. That's one thing. Another thing is a house that's rented entirely where there is no permanent resident, but the house is rented out as a vacation rental, the, the entire house. Then there are B and Bs, we, we've got that covered. But in addition, there are these fractional ownership deals like Picasso and like timeshare homes. And I think we have an obligation as a planning commission to pro- provide advice to the council on addressing uh fractional ownership and time share uh properties as well. It's all part of the same, they, they, they all create the same kinds of problems.
I might add one more uh to that list as well, Commissioner Brown, and that would be uh uh live awards or vessels that are, that are rented out as, as short-term rentals uh which we're relatively sure, we're aware that we have some of those in the city. And so that's another, it's just another thought, not to, not to muddy the water too much, so to speak. Uh but I, I wanted to go back to um really quick, if I could, to Commissioner Griner's um suggestion about the the comparable cities. And, you know, a- at the end of this discussion, I definitely want, would want to get some direction from, from the commission on what they want to see. You know, this, this initial salvo here of a, of a memo was really meant to just get the juices flowing and get talking about this. And, and so, you know, we threw some cities, I threw some cities in there that, you know, like I said, are not comparable, but that have regulations. And so, you know, gives us something to at least think about. Here's how some places are, have thought about this. It may not work for Gig Harbor at all. Um but I'd be, you know, the staff would be very interested to know um what cities uh that, that the commission would like us to go and, and look at and you know, and even if they don't have a short-term rental regulation or a code, we could try and glean from their regulations or, or speak with them about how they are handling that, you know, are they handling it like we are through some other use definition, some other permitting process? Uh and we could bring that back, you know, cause I think that's, I think that's would be really useful information. So I'm, I'm happy to get a list. You know, I heard Bainbridge, Bashan, Port Townsend, Port Orchard. Um, you know, I'd add, if, you know, I'd add the Silicon, Silicon and Paulsbo to that. If there's others, you know, please go ahead and throw them out there and we'll, we'll, we'll take a look.
Uh Carl, I would throw out Squim as well. Uh as you know, it's, it's a, an attractive place for vacationers, has lots of B and Bs and, and I'm sure they have lots of short-term rentals.
Uh it's a great, great, great uh great one, Commissioner Redbury, thank you.
Well, I, I would just comment.
And Carl?
Go ahead, Amanda.
Okay, thanks. Um I was gonna also suggest, I know within the last year, I believe, Leavenworth or the greater county around it also um put in some significant uh short-term rental. Um and then also, we've had experience not owning, but just being out, the Metow Valley also has some pretty exceptional short-term rental um regulations out there also, which would be kind of interesting to see. They like manage all of their short-term rentals through a single entity, it seems like, out there.
Interesting. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, totally different way of looking at it, yep.
Well, I think you did do a nice job, Carl, of, of the examples that you gave uh demonstrates um you know, the the wide range on one hand, but then also the crossover of the various cities and the various regulations that they have and, and how different cities. And so I really appreciated that, that you provided that, that spectrum of, of viewpoints, as it were. Um a- and I, I don't think we need to necessarily um you, you know, we don't need fifty of these things, but uh I, I have been an Airbnb user on travels all over the world. And um so I, I've been in, in Cosmetolitan, Cosmopolitan, huge cities, you know, Sydney, Australia. And but the one that comes to mind for me is Sonoma, Arizona, and they have a ton of Airbnbs down there. Um and I think most of them are the, you know, bedroom in the occupied house. And um a- and that's a kind of a destination place like Gig Harbor. A quiet bedroom community otherwise, although I suppose when you get towards the center of town, um you, you can't argue that, or, or you wouldn't necessarily call it that, but um anyway, I don't think we need to, to refine our focus on just, you know, what's going on in Washington State. So just food for thought on that, in that regard.
Uh and I, before I, I see Commissioner Crossick has his hand up, but before we uh go there, I, oh, I was, I wanted to go back, Chair, um to some things that you said earlier about um the complex process. So we've heard that a couple of times. So our current, you know, the current process seems to be complex. Um and so I was thinking, as you were, you all were speaking about this, and you also noted uh that the, that the cost seems exorbitant for what people go through right now to, to permit one of these. I think it would be interesting uh to look at, you know, or bring back for uh commission, the, what the process is exactly, you know, how lay that out and sort of a, I don't know, you know, spreadsheet or something, so you can actually see what that process is. And then break the cost down as well. And I think also as part of that though, and, and correct me if I'm, if I'm off base here, but it might be interesting, you know, we could look at the cost of, of that currently. Um, you know, maybe we see what the cost is in other places if we can, if we can get that information. But I think it's also interesting for you to understand the cost of other permit uh processes, you know, that people go through, you know. So I'll, we'll, uh, we'll endeavor to put together um some, some uh some exhibit uh around those things so that you guys get a good understanding of uh what that, what that looks like. If that's, if that's okay.
Sure, that would be very helpful. In addition to, and I, I don't know how easy this would be, but, but to know the economic impact on the city, you know, obviously when tourists come in, then, then the local business, businesses benefit, um which is a good and, and I, I'm sure they pay taxes to the city, but you know, do the lodging taxes. Um I, I believe that Airbnb, like again, I can see when I do an Airbnb, there's a, a, usually a tax tack, tacked on. And sometimes it'll say lodging tax. And so is that money that goes to the city, or is there a way to figure out? You know, economic impact of the various kinds of um you know, that, that Commissioner Brown spoke of.
Yeah, I, I, I believe we've got some of that, uh, some of that data actually already. Um when this was uh going through the council process to adopt that ordinance, um some of those questions were brought up, and so um I'll be able to get that information pretty, pretty easily and quickly and bring that, bring it back. I don't have it at my fingertips at the moment, but we, we certainly will get that information. I can, I can break that down in a table.
Um and, and just, I'll get to you there in a second, John. But I mean, for me, it just underscores the fact that the more, this is going to be a passionate topic.
Yes.
No question about that. We all appreciate that. Um and uh so the more data that we have, the better off, the better served we're going to be, both for us as a commission, but more importantly, for our recommendation to the council and for the citizens of Gig Harbor.
I appreciate that, Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Krosick?
Yeah, Greg, I, I, I agree with you, uh what you're saying here, the more information we have. But I also think that um, you know, in terms of trying to find comparable cities, I think the problems that a neighbor, that these sorts of activities are gonna create in the neighborhood in Tacoma or Walla Walla or Spokane for that matter, are gonna be pretty much the same as the kinds of issues that are gonna come up here in Gig Harbor. So I'm not really sure that size is a, uh size of the city or the jurisdiction is a major factor in determining uh what pieces we pull out of other ordinances. Also, I think it would be really good if whatever ordinance we draft, it has a preamble or something in the whereas is that recognizes that the city of Gig Harbor is not a resort community. While we have a thriving uh tourism industry here, it is not the intention of the city council to make this something like Sun Cadia or Sun River in Oregon, or, or some of those other kinds of resort communities.
No, I, I think that's a great point, a- and you know, that the flavor of the city is more important than the size of the city. You know, and as, as you were talking about that, you know, Miami Beach comes to mind and, and you know, so a lot of the horror stories that you hear about these things come from, you know, the proverbial party house. Um but typically speaking, um we're not a party house destination. Uh but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't take those um those things into consideration as we contemplate, how do we regulate that, the short-term rentals? Commissioner Griner?
I'm super chatty today, cause uh, cause I was outdoors all day long in thirty-degree weather. What I wanted to ask in reading through a number of the, well, in reading through all those documents, there was something called a nursing room site. Can somebody explain to me what that is? And is that, was that a typographical, or is that a real thing? I didn't really understand what that was, and I'm sorry, I'm trying to find where I saw that, but if somebody knows the answer, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I, you know, I saw that too, Commissioner Griner, and I'm trying to remember uh where I saw, I believe it was in a, it was in a comment that was, that was submitted, but I don't remember which.
And I'll, I'll look through it and see if I can find it here.
Okay, yeah, and I, and, and I'm not sure I'll have an answer for what that.
Okay, I, I didn't know if it should be, if it's common knowledge or what that meant, so thank you.
I believe it's referring to the site that um traveling nurses use to find places to stay when they're sent to different hospitals to work, cause sometimes it'll be three to six months or a month. But they do have sites for nurses and doctors to find residency when they're at these places.
Oh, that, that, that sounds correct. Cool, thanks, Michelle.
That's a really, that's, that's great, Michelle, thank you. And I think that, that, and I think that is exactly it, and that brings to mind, I I know somebody who actually has a, an, a short-term rental in their basement in Seattle, and they, and they rent to a lot of nurses, and so that, that, that lines up exactly.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, um, a couple of questions for Carl, for just some general background. I was a little um, I don't have a good handle on the I don't have a good handle on the difference between conditional use and permitted use. And then I understand what not permitted means. Then, one of your, under your issue statement, you talk about the three different things we have in place for lodging level one right now. It would seem to me that if we could restrict this kind of activity to the places in the city where it would have the least impact in terms of, you know, neighborhoods and things like that, that that might be a good idea. But I wasn't, could you give me a little background on conditional versus permitted?
Yeah, conditional use is something that, you know, it is a permitted use, but it's permitted with, with conditions. So it has to go through a, you know, a public process in that sense. And to mitigate for any, you know, nuisance factors that it might produce in the neighborhood, for instance. Whereas a permitted use is something that's just, you know, it's permitted outright. It might still need some, you know, and likely does need some land use permitting, or you know, it's gonna need building permits or something like that. But it doesn't have to go through that same process of necessarily garnering, or I should say, it doesn't have to go through that same process of allowing it to be permitted through a process whereby conditions are placed on it. So there, for a conditional use permit, there are certain criteria in our code that has to be met for that use to be permitted in that location, where something that's permitted does not have to meet those criteria necessarily. But both are an allowed use within that zone.
Good. Thank you.
Hopefully, I, hopefully I nailed that. I would have maybe failed an interview right there.
Okay.
But I, really quick, though, a really good point, Commissioner Soltis, so I just want to reiterate that point that you made there about, about potentially looking at restricting this type of use to certain areas of town. In other words, certain zones, allowing it in some zones and not allowing it in others. That's, that was kind of your thought.
Well, related to that, Carl, can you tell me how the historic district is defined?
Yeah, it is, it is defined by meets and bounds essentially in our, in our design manual. So we have a, if that's what you're asking, are you asking geographically?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's defined by meets and bounds or a map within our, within our design manual, and is essentially an overlay on the area that, that it pertains to.
Thank you.
I do believe that map is contained in your binders, too. If any of you don't have them, I can send you a link to the one that we have available.
I would appreciate that.
It's interesting that, you know, since you mentioned that, it's, I mean, this is one of the technical issues, because, because I suppose you could argue that one of the most attractive areas to have short-term rentals would be in the historic district. And it potentially is the one prone to be most problematic as perhaps as far as the neighbors are concerned. Justified or not, though.
Potentially, you know, and that's a good point, Chair, that, that you make there, that, you know, the, these things typically go into a single-family home that's existing and, and don't really, you know, give any outward appearance of the fact that there's a sort of a business being run in them. And, and, and really aren't allowed to, you know, whether it's through a home occupation permit or, you know, under a conditional use permit. What, you know, whatever the, whatever the permitting is, generally speaking, they're not gonna have any sort of outward appearance of, of a, of a business being run there. And so, you know, they wouldn't, and, and the other side of that is that they're not generally being built. And then, you know, we're not, we're not seeing a lot of infill development, we don't have a lot of infill development, we don't see a lot of infill development whereby a single-family home is built and then immediately turned into, you know, a short-term, short-term rental. And there's, they do see that in other jurisdictions a lot, I think. And, and we do see it in some of the new subdivisions. It's not necessarily short-term rentals, but long-term rentals, you know, they're, they're brand-new houses built, bought, in some cases sight unseen, and then maybe immediately turned into a, into a long-term rental. So so I guess, I guess to that point, I guess the point I'm trying to make is that in the historic district, you know, it's mostly about design. The, you know, the overlay is mostly relative to the design of the home. And so many of those homes and much of that area is really built out. And so the, the businesses would be moving into existing homes. And so they're, I don't know, I guess I don't know how much impact the historic district could have on that issue or not. But I think it's a, it's a really good point. Certainly something to, to think about and keep in mind, especially when, you know, especially if we're thinking and going down the, the path that Commissioner Soltis was just talking about, and that is, you know, restricting these two certain areas of town, rather than just saying, you know, making a blanket statement that they're allowed anywhere, and here are the regulations for them. And are regulations different in different areas based on zoning or based on the historic district? You know, those are, I think those are some really good questions that need to be asked.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, I would like to suggest that it may be useful to do two things. One is to create and maintain a list of problems here in Gig Harbor that these ordinances may address, and current problems as well as future problems. So that we can kind of test any recommendations against the problems we're trying to solve. Secondly, I think it would be useful at some point, and I would suggest beginning now, to start creating a straw man ordinance that will not be completed until we're done, but at least it will be a, oh, kind of a structure or a framework for what we're working on. And I think that would attract a lot of public comment. And also give us an opportunity to kind of piece this thing together like a mosaic. And the two documents could be, they work together. Is that, is that clear, or did I lose you?
No, I, sorry, I'm writing down. I'm not, I was not sleeping. Sorry, Commissioner Brown. Yeah, no, you, I did, you didn't lose me at all. I think what I heard you say is that you think it, it would behoove us to sort of put together kind of a model or a skeleton of an ordinance at this point.
Yeah.
So that people have something to speak to or comment on.
Yeah, and it might have, it might have multiple options in it. You know, addressing, oh, issues like parking, for example. If I, if I had a bedroom to be rented in my house, should I be required to provide off-street parking for that bedroom? Issues like that. And I, I think it would, you know, give the, give the public an opportunity to, to think about this in a structured way, and also to comment on it.
I guess the, the the only, I guess, reservation I would have about that idea is that, you know, in, in, in my, in my mind, trying to go out and get community feedback on the subject generally, before putting pen to paper, would seem to me like it is offering the community a better sense that they're engaged and being heard, and that they are a part of the, of the process. And if we, if we put something out too soon, I just don't think that we could put something out that might cover all of the options that everybody's thinking about. And if we miss a few things, you know, people might think that we are, you know, forming an opinion about what, what and how these things should be regulated. For, and here's another point I would make, is that what if, and I'm, I'm not saying that this would happen, but just as an, for instance, if all of the comments we received, if we opened up public comment, and we put this straw ordinance out there, and all the comments we hear from people are, we don't think they should be regulated, we don't think we need an ordinance for this, then we've kind of, you know, maybe we've spun our wheels. You know, gone in a complete, gone in the, gone in completely wrong direction, you know, we may, we might find. So that's, that's the only reservation I have, or the only caution I think I would offer planning commission on that. And certainly, if planning commission feels otherwise, you know, that's, we would go that, we'll go that direction.
I would offer a comment here that, I think we need to begin by clearly defining what we mean by a short-term rental. That is both in terms of duration, are we talking about anything less than a year, anything less than six months? Are we talking about Airbnbs that might be rented for a week, or maybe a month at a time? Are we going to be including such things as live-boards in that definition? Are we going to really get out into the weeds, so to speak, and start talking about grandma renting out a room in her house to make ends meet? And in that case, people that find themselves in that kind of a situation probably won't even think about consulting the city as to whether or not there's an ordinance that controls that kind of thing.
That's a good point, Commissioner Bradbury. I will say, though, that the, in the memo I provided, that there, we do have a definition that was provided by the RCWs, and it, and it, and it does specify that the short-term rental is a use that is offered, provided to a guest for a fee for fewer than 30 consecutive nights. So and that's the, that's the definition that all the jurisdictions that I've seen that have addressed this matter have used. They've all gone with this 30-day threshold. So anything less than 30 days, that's a short-term rental. Anything greater than that is considered a long-term rental. So
Thank you.
You're welcome. Sorry, Commissioner Graner.
Just two points to Commissioner Brown's proposal or comment. You know, I, I mean, you talked about Stellacom and how there were misconceptions and those type of things. And I think that, from my opinion, that would be kind of the danger of throwing something out there is, I think things could, there's, people react to anything that they can get. And I think it would be kind of dangerous to be even, you know, making comments the direction we wanted to go until we hear public comment. That's my opinion. And the other question that I have is how do short-term rentals impact, or maybe I'm saying this backwards, different HOAs have regulations that regulate, like how many short-term rent, rentals can be in a neighborhood? You know, does, would a city ruling supersede that? How does that, does that affect any of it? I'm not certain. I just wanted to mention that while I was thinking about it, so I didn't forget it.
That's, that's a good point. So, so your question is, if an HOA has a restriction on the number of short-term rentals that could be allowed, or in some cases, and in a lot of cases, it's rentals really in general. That's how most of those CCNRs would read. And so the way we look at that is that, you know, CCNRs can be, can be more restrictive than city code, but they can, but they, they cannot be less restrictive. In other words, if they're less restrictive, then, you know, the city code overrules them.
Yeah.
But if they, they can certainly be more restrictive as long as they're legal.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I just have a, a quick comment about, and about a comment that you made, Commissioner Bradbury, and I don't, I don't think we can, we can't get into differentiating rules based on someone's motivation for, for having an Airbnb. So, so you mentioned that grandma renting out that, the room to be able to pay the mortgage. That, that can't be different than someone who is well-to-do and, and wants to rent out of their house just to have more money. So I just think we have to be careful there. And I'm not sure you meant anything by that comment, but it just caught my ear.
For clarity, I was not referring to somebody who rent out a bedroom on a nightly or weekly basis, but somebody that might rent it out by, as Carl explained, a long-term basis.
But I think we, we did get input from, and I think it's legitimate to say that there are people that, that are gonna find themselves in a financial position where they feel like they have to do this in order to pay their increasing property taxes, or, you know, they may be on a fixed income and everything was okay previously, but it's not okay anymore. Or, you know, their child has a medical bill to pay, or, you know, on and on it goes. The, I, I just think that, that the, the regulations have to be agnostic for the motivation.
I would concur with that.
Okay. Well, I, I am anxious to, to get as much public input as soon as we can, as we move forward with this. And I would really like us to try to be creative. I mean, I, hopefully, the Omicron wave is going to continue to recede. And we're not gonna get some other nasty variant showing up. But where I'm going with this is I would really like to be able to have an in-person open house on this. You just can't substitute, in my mind, you know, for a face-to-face interaction, although it's going to be behind masks. But even if we have to be creative in the location, like, you know, in a, in a large ventilated space with tables set far apart, or whatever. But I would really like to be able to strive to have some interaction with the public in a, in a vis-à-vis format. And, and I'm, I'm welcome to hear contrary opinions from, from the other commissioners.
Well, I agree with that, Greg.
So, Chair, I'll chime in. I think that's a, I think it's, it's a good idea, certainly something that we could explore. I mean, at the moment, given that Civic Center is closed to, to the public, at least through, I think it's February 1st is what the, the current, is that it? Michelle, thank you. That's the current timeline, and that certainly could end up being extended. We just don't, we don't know yet. I know that there have been some, you know, we've had, we've had some in-person public meetings. Council has met in person a few times now. And I don't know where that stands. I suppose with the Civic Center closed, they'll be, they'll be meeting virtually again. My, my recommendation on that is that we have a, we would need to have a discussion with the city administrator. City Administrator. Um, maybe the mayor. Uh, to, to iron out whether, you know, the feasibility of something like that. And then I think the other thing we have to consider then is, is the, is the timing of it. You know, is that, is likely is something we have to, you know, we have to plan for. Uh, and given the complexities of the, of, of, of. Of how we're operating under COVID. Uh, you know, there might need to be some necessary lead time. Uh, and, and then I would also offer that. If, if we were able to do something like that, if that were even of, of, uh, if that did find its way to through the. Feasibility review. We would want to offer that as well as something else. For folks, because my guess is that we would not get a large turnout. Of people showing up for something like that right now, just given the, given the climate that COVID has. Laid down on us. So. I, I, I would, I would consider all those factors. Basis.
I, I would state that I agree with Greg. There's no substitute for meeting in person. Unfortunately, in our current political and social climate, uh, it, it has been. E- essentially shut down. Uh, and I think we all suffer for that. Uh, in ways that are not being adequately addressed. But unfortunately, Carl, as you point out, it is what it is.
Well, just, just to be clear to the public that's listening, I, I, I am, I'm a physician, so I have, I have. I support vaccines, I support masking, I support social distancing. But, but you, you know, they, they, I, what I'm thinking about is a high school gymnasium. Um, you know, a venue like that, a well-ventilated, large area. Um, and certainly would not want any commissioner to attend if they didn't feel that, that it would save and it would of course be a, a masked event. No mask, no entry kind of thing. So, so. A- anyway, I mean, maybe. Um, you know, I appreciate your pushback, Commissioner Bradbury, maybe, um, it's a bridge too far right now. Uh, but, but I, I don't think, I mean. If nothing else, the, the downtown. You know, Business Association or, you know, the, the Chamber of Commerce. That has a vested interest based on the public input already. So, um, you know, who knows, maybe, maybe some business has a venue. Um, that is, that is open and well-ventilated and that they'd be willing to, um, share with us.
Well, I absolutely agree, Greg. Uh, I, I think a, a large space. Uh, where CDC guidance could be followed with spacing and masks and so on. Uh, is, is an absolutely common sense response. Um, but as Carl pointed out, even in those kinds of conditions, there are people who would not be willing to attend. Uh, for those, we have the virtual format available like we do now. So I. Personally, I would like to see it happen practically. It probably won't be able to happen.
Okay. All right, well. Appreciate your staff work as always, Carl and your team, uh, getting the information out to us. Uh, appreciate the discussion amongst the commissioners. Appreciate the input that we've already received from the public and. Uh, it's been a good discussion and much more to follow. Commissioner Soltis.
Yeah, Greg, I was just trying to ask Carl, uh, what the next steps we can expect. Him to be taking now, given that we've gotten this briefing and also what are the next steps for the very first topic that we can expect to see? Could you refresh me on that in terms of the temporary housing?
Oh, uh, Katrina presented. Uh, yeah, so next steps will be, uh, that we'll schedule a, a, a public hearing. Uh, and, and bring that back. So there would be a, a comment period leading up to that hearing. Uh, so we'll have to look down the road. I know the next meeting, planning commission's next meeting is a joint. Meeting with council. Uh, and so obviously we would not hold a, a hearing at that, at that time. So it might be the following. Uh, meeting in, in February, the second meeting in February, which the, the date be escaping me and I, and I don't want it. For you and for those in attendance. I'm not setting this in stone today here. Uh, but the next, the next meeting would be the seven. Seventeenth, thanks, Michelle. So that's a, that's an opportunity, that would be the next opportunity to hold that hearing, but that doesn't give us much time to, um. To get a public comment, um, here you go and get the noticing out and everything. So it might fall. It could fall into early March. We actually bring that back. Uh, and then.
First meeting in March is canceled.
Meeting in March is canceled?
March third. For the reception.
Oh, that's right. Thanks for the reminder. Okay. So, so I guess in answer your question, Commissioner Soltis, that, that is the next step is to hold a, a public hearing, uh, on that ordinance. Um, get public comment. Planning Commission deliberate and, um. And recommend, make a recommendation to council. Uh, and then as far as next steps on this topic for short-term rentals, I, yeah, we, I think we still kind of need to nail that down. Maybe a little bit here. So we've got a couple of ideas, I think. Differing ideas floating out there at the moment. And, you know, so I don't know what. Which direction commission, planning commission would like to go. I, I've got a list of things that I, that I certainly am planning to research. Uh, and bring back to commissioners the next time we meet on this. Uh, but I've also heard from the commission that they really, that we really want to get, uh, public comment. Uh, early. In this process and, and, and that is to say more public comment, because of course we have those public comments that were provided to council. That are certainly part of the record and will carry forward, uh, and, you know, will keep. Keep in reference and then we have, we've actually received a couple of additional comments. From local, from the local community, uh, on this subject leading up to this study session, but of course it's not a hearing, so. Um, we didn't necessarily want to admit that. Until we had, uh, opened up something. Uh, like, uh, actually opened up an official public comment period regarding. Uh, feedback from the entire community, community as a whole. And that's kind of how we've always done planning commission, city harbor, so. Um, so I, you know, my recommendation still stands, uh, as I've noted in the, in the memo. Uh, that we consider opening up a, an early. Two or three week public comment period to allow. Feedback from the community. And allow staff to. Package that up, put it together, um, provide some analysis of it. Answer these questions that have been posed here tonight. Uh, and bring all of that back to. The commission for another study session or two, to consider what we've heard. Um, consider answers to questions. That have been posed here tonight, uh, and, and maybe, you know, any additional, take, take any additional questions that come up as a result of. Looking at, um, what the community provides.
Carl, would you consider posting your staff memo on the website so that the public can have access? To that as background and, and a kind of a, a scope of what we're working on.
Uh, yes, absolutely, Commissioner Brown. Everything that, uh, that we present publicly will, will end up on that website as background and. We will update the schedule as soon as we know it. Uh, but that website will be, um, sort of the, the living, the base station for this, for this discussion moving forward.
Good.
I believe it is currently linked there. Um, in the calendar at the bottom of the short-term rental page. Our agendas are linked and all of the documents provided to you tonight. For review were included in the link in the agenda.
Good.
Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Okay. Well. One other piece of homework for you, Carl, is, um, a question that, that Bob had that you, or Commissioner Soltis had that you shared with me and that is. The, of the, of the towns that, um, have put regulations in place, have there been any? Uh, legal challenges to any of those regulations? So it would be, it would be interesting to know that and, and thanks for that question, Commissioner Soltis.
So, you know, and to come back to the, the question about the next steps, then, you know, that, that was. We have one, my recommendation there from the memo, but there's also. Charity recommendation, uh, about holding, um. Kind of a, I, I, I don't know what that looks like exactly. It's an, an open house or a public forum. Uh, of some sort, uh, in, in person. We've also heard. Uh, Commissioner Soltis, I, his idea about, uh. Sort of a virtual open house or utilizing. Social media, uh, sort of using, utilizing some different ideas to get the, get the word out and garner, um, community feedback. I just, I just want to make sure that, uh, we don't close the meeting out tonight without giving staff. Some concrete direction on. How we want to proceed or, or do we want to proceed to another? Study session, answering some of these questions we've heard tonight, have staff do a little more homework. And bring that back to commission before. Going out to the, and, and getting support or getting, uh, feedback from the public.
Well, how about? Well, just as a, as a baseline comment. I, I think we are better served. Uh, for the community to be thoughtful and methodical. Um, rather than trying to rush something. Um, and so. Um, because as I indicated earlier, nothing has changed except for they're, they're. Not processing any new applications. So, um. And, and it may be, it's unfortunate, maybe there's one individual that's caught in the, in the. The process where it was incomplete and therefore has been put on hold. But I think we. It, it's more important to me to look at the community at large and get this right. And, and get it right and get a good recommendation to the council. And. The point being, I don't, I don't see a reason to rush this. Um, I think, so, so trying to get. Um, whatever the process is, you know, getting the notice out to, to open up for public comment, you know. Um, we can do that. And then that doesn't preclude the opportunity later if circumstances change for us to be able to have an open house in that, in a large area environment. So, so I would suggest that we go with that step first. Um, try to use social media. Um, you know, let your friends know, share it on your own Facebook page that. That, you know, this is a, a big deal decision that's coming down the pike for Geek Harbor and encourage people to provide their input. And, and then. Based on that first. Tranche of public input, then we can reconvene and, and put this back on the agenda. Does that make sense?
Makes sense to me, Greg. I don't see any reason, you know, much as I like to do something new and modern, it doesn't mean we can't. Follow the usual patterns and then. Out and go off and learn Cobalt or some kind of computer language and figure this all out for us in its fair time.
Sure.
But, but it could, it's, I, I think it's definitely worth looking at new, new ways of gathering public input, but maybe we don't slow the process down for it this time.
Greg, I agree with what you said.
Or just a comment, but that's my opinion. Maybe the rest of the group doesn't feel the same way, but.
All right, thanks. Commissioner Project.
Yeah, Greg, I agree totally with what you say. That's the, that's the right direction to move.
All right then. Does that, does that clarify, Carl, for what your next steps are?
Yeah, that's, that's great. If all commissioners agree, I am, I've, I've got my marching, we've got our marching orders and we will get, um. We will get a public comment period. Noticed and out, uh, ASAP. Uh, to start, start getting more community, community feedback. And again, I want to stress that it is additional. Feedback is, you know, so everybody understands that we have. Comments already in the record that, that will, that will carry forward and certainly be considered as part of this process in addition to. Um, whatever we, what, whatever new ideas, um, and, and things that, uh, the public has or, or wants to put forward, so.
You are, Commissioner Bradbury, are you comfortable with that approach?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Great. So more to follow.
More to follow, yes. This, this, this is a good one.
Yeah, and then, um, as far as the next agenda item, other business. Next meeting is scheduled for. February third and we, are we confirmed that that's going to be a, a joint planning commission and city council meeting?
Yes, we are.
Well, wait a minute. I, I thought we were told the February third meeting is canceled.
March third is canceled.
March third is canceled.
So would, would it be a five o'clock meeting or six o'clock and could you kind of give me an idea? Having never done a joint meeting before. What, what that looks like, what, how that works?
Sorry, I was trying to get the house phone to stop ringing. Um, it will be a joint meeting with. At five o'clock regular time, it'll just be, um. Counsel. Attending with us so that we can discuss. What our plans are for planning commission and projects.
Yeah, it's a, it's a meeting to review, um. Priorities for the year and talk about what. What council, so, so to preface that a little bit, the council retreat is this weekend on Saturday, so. The council will be discussing its priorities, uh, for the, for the year. Uh, and, and looking at, um, what it, what it wants to accomplish. And so this is an opportunity to get FaceTime between the, um, with the planning commission to. Provide them with some, uh. Some of their, the, the, the council's expectations. Um, ask questions and kind of inform you all of what's coming down the pike from their perspective, so. Um, I think it's a really, it's, it's something that used to be done more often. It, uh, I don't think it's been done in recent years quite so much, so. And certainly, you know, it's some, it's an opportunity for, uh, planning commission to ask questions of council as well as far as those priorities go, so. Yeah, it, it's a, it's a, it's a really good idea to sort of reinstate this. For the city, I believe. Hopefully that answers your question, Commissioner Griner. I, to, to be honest, I don't know what it will look like exactly yet. Um, because it's been a long time since we've done these and now we're in, I don't know if it's gonna be in person or virtual at this point. Um, so. May, you know, more, more to come on that and maybe once we have a better idea, we could send out, um. An email, uh, to, to the commission. Sort of, uh, you know, providing some kind of a, a, a quick overview of what that, you know, what it will be, if that's, if that's useful.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
So, good question, Commissioner Grant, and, and, um, don't feel lonely because none of us have been at. This type of a meeting yet, but it was something that, as Carl said, has happened in the past and when, when. We made a plea to the council writ large to allow us to please do. The work of the planning commission, uh, as, you know, as outlined in the, in the city's. Rules and regulations and stop doing everything by direct consideration. This was one of the things that we asked to, uh, that be re-implemented and that would be at least an annual, uh, joint, joint meeting. Um, and it should be a good idea. Um, and it should be a good idea, um, I think mostly, we're going to be listening about what their priorities are. Um, but it, but it's a good opportunity for an interactive session. Listening and understanding, okay.
Hey Greg, I, I wanted to let you know that I won't be able to attend that meeting, I have my shoulder operation on February the first, so I'll be drugged up and. Probably not fit for public comment.
That, that might be the, the best day to go to that type of a meeting. Okay, well, good luck with your surgery.
Yeah, good luck.
Okay, well, um, Carl and Michelle, if you could stay on, I just have a quick question for you. Uh, about nothing to do with what we've discussed this evening. So, um, anyway, uh, if there's no other final thoughts, then I am willing to entertain the motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Moved and seconded by Commissioner Brown, moved by Prozick, seconded by Brown, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, meeting is adjourned at six fifty-one PM on January twenty-seventh.